Good evening. I'm Michael O'Reilly, the chairman of Town and Row Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome to the regular meeting, January the 5th, 2023. It is 7:00 PM. Stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands or nays under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Today's public meeting is a hybrid meeting, which will be conducted in part by electronic equipment pursuant to Connecticut Public Law Act 21-2. Going to call the roll, starting on my right.
Dominic Smiglino, alternate.
Dominic Panici, alternate.
Nicole Lupo, alternate.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Thank you. And we're going to need to seat, we can seat both alternates tonight. So, all three, two, three.
Three.
Yes.
It's the first, that is the first.
I forgot.
Alternate.
Alright, so then we have four now, and expecting our Commissioner Ambrosi. So initially, we'll start with general public participation. This is a time when the public is allowed to address the commission in a formal manner on any matters that are not before the commission at this time, or expected to be before the commission in any time in the near future. So this is public participation. If anyone would like to address the commission, either online or in person, please raise your hand. Anyone want to speak at general public participation, please raise your hand. Seeing none, let the record show Commissioner Ambrosi has entered the building. Going to go right into public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. They're both continuations. The first one is excavation and fill, 2022-03, file number 110. This is 125 Gardner Road, continued from December the 1st. And for the applicant.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have two.
We have additional.
Additional exhibits.
Go ahead.
Letter of extension from solely engineering dated 12/12/2022, in response to comments, plan revision from solely engineering dated 12/7/2022. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
After the applicant, my name is Chris Plowski, civil engineer with solely engineering. Office is located here, 501 Main Street. Here to speak on 125 Gardner Road. We're seeking excavation and filling permit. We were for you last year. We are continuing the hearing tonight. So last time, there were several comments and questions from commissioners, which I will include. I did want to just run through some of the quick changes we made to the plan set. We did receive comments from the town engineer, and we did respond to those comments. The plan set before you should reflect those changes, and I'm just going to briefly touch on them. So familiarize yourselves. We're talking about 125 Gardner Road. So it's close to the new Town and Row border, so off of 25, and then down Pepper, and then to 125 Gardner Road. Here's a zoomed in aerial of the site. So some of the comments we received from the town engineer were regarding drainage study that we completed on the site. So we didn't end up changing the location of the stormwater basin. We did complete additional test pits in the area and found there was a fairly shallow depth ledge. So instead of changing the location, we opted to place infiltration media in the bottom of the basin, provide waterfall treatment, as we don't have existing soils that would provide that. So essentially, again, the basin stayed in the same location, as shown on the plans, but the bottom is now placed infiltration media and also features a clean drain. There were also a few comments regarding the curb numbers and other engineering specifics that we used in our study, which we corrected and responded to on the, I believe, December 9th of last year. And again, those, all those changes are reflected in the plans you have for you. That was pretty much the major changes in terms of plan-wise. I want to skip to the end of my presentation here.
Rick, do you have new plans?
I don't, yeah, do we have new plans? I don't have, I only have.
It could be from December 9th.
Oh, those didn't change?
Changed the plans, but, right?
We changed the plans for December 9th. We have not changed since.
Okay.
We were anticipating a hearing in the middle of December.
Okay, it's the same ones.
So yes, the plan you have, I apologize, should be updated. So last time we were here, there were some concerns regarding blasting that's going to take place in the site. We did pull together a pre-blast blasting plan that's included in the materials you have before you. It details how, when, the length of time, methodology, the safeguards in place. It's all listed within that blasting plan. Included also in the blasting plan, there is a pre-blast survey exhibit, which I have before you, right here. I just wanted to touch on this briefly.
I don't have any of that.
Yeah. Yeah, staff is apologizing to the commission. Apparently, it wasn't given to the commissioners, but we're planning on continuing this hearing.
Yes, Gardner has to get continued, that's correct. Waiting on well.
I'll make, I'll make sure of that, okay.
Okay. My apologies, but there is material. There's a blasting plan. I actually have it here. Pull it up. This is the blasting plan, and again, it will be circulated to you before the hearing is closed. This basically details, I scroll down here, the site reviews, the pre-blast survey structures, the pre-blast and post-blast well surveys, and how they have to get completed, any complaints and how they're handled, the seismic monitoring requirements, the area, the sequence, the quantity, the hours of work. Talks about the explosives and manufacturing of mats, the warnings, vibrations, the blast error reports, any pre-splitting that has to occur, which along the rock faces that want to be stabilized for future development on the site, design of the blast. It's all detailed in this blasting report, which again, I apologize, it's not before you currently. What I did want to touch on in the presentation is, at the end of that blasting plan, is this pre-blast survey. So the pre-blast survey is basically a 750-foot radius, or 500-foot, excuse me, from the subject property, where they go around and they'll install seismic machines and do pre-blast surveys on foundations and wells in the area. And those properties are all shown in this exhibit. And what, some things I wanted to highlight are, this property is owned by either Aquarian or State of Connecticut, and there's, it's currently not inhabited. It's open space or public land, if you will. That includes this piece, this large piece surrounding, and this piece off to the screen here. So essentially, on three sides of our property, there is nothing to be surveyed. It's essentially open space land, which is natural. On the other side, this large piece is also open space, one of the other rusts. So essentially, if you look, we have a huge piece here, this open space, and on the other side, and it does continue generally where I'm showing with my cursor here. I did place an inquiry with Aquarian, and I have found that this entire fishing set is on public water, so there are no wells of concern. I believe this is Applegate lane. So essentially, that leaves about three properties on Gardner Road that have wells. There are houses on these three properties in Applegate as well. They will all receive pre-blast surveys, done on the foundations, et cetera. I did just want to go over this map briefly, show that it's not in a densely populated area, and the plan, the blasting plan goes through all the safeguards and all the measures that we're taking, that will be taken to ensure there's no damage done to the adjoining A question was asked by Commissioner May last time regarding the wetlands in the area of the site. So I just wanted to showcase, this is our site right here. There's a wetland that goes to the rear of our site, and it starts up right about here where this call-out is, and it continues down along the back of our site, and then it continues to go, I believe, if I say west, down Gardner Road. Our site is at an elevation anywhere from 430 to 450. These are 10-foot contours shown on this exhibit. And again, I apologize, this was submitted as part of our response, but I don't believe you have this before you. But this exhibit shows that essentially, our site in this area are up good 20 to 30 feet from this wetland elevations. The wetland elevation is approximately 410 to 414, and again, it continues along the back of our site. And our site's anywhere from 430 to 470, as previously discussed. So we're not going to be impacting any of this wetland area as part of our excavation and filling permit. There were some other questions regarding hours of operation and the hours of blasting. As I mentioned before, dust control and suppression measures. And if I flip back a few pages, they are all listed on sheet 2.21. We did add some additional notes to clarify how those items take place. I thought I clipped it off the screen, but dust control measures, the hours of operation, FLC equipment are all listed on sheet 2.1, as I believe that was the comment last time I wanted to address. There also was a question about progress reports. How is the site going to be monitored? Note 7 on sheet 2.21 describes in detail the engineering progress reports that are required and must be prepared by a licensed civil engineer on a quarterly basis and presented to the commission. Additionally, the commission may at any time during the permit duration require an engineering progress report from the applicant to be made by a licensed civil engineer. So there's at a minimum quarterly reports required by a licensed civil engineer, and then you, as the commission, may require additional ones if there is a need under your discretion. And again, this is pretty common with other excavation and fill permits that we have successfully gained approvals for in town, and regularly provide updates to town staff and the commission on their progress. And let's see. I believe those are the updates in regards to any changes we've made from the plans, and again, they're minor. They were regarding our stormwater analysis and the material in the basin, and then we did provide those additional exhibits, the blasting plan, the details on the dust suppression and all the other items I talked about. Those are essentially our changes for the commissioner's comments. I don't have anything further at this time I'd like to ask, which is any questions from the commission.
All right, well, let's start on my left.
Good. Thank you, Chris, for the site walk, by the way.
Yes.
That was very helpful to go out and see the site in person, and it was raining that day, so it really helped put eyes on what it's going to look like. The day we walked, I think you had mentioned that the scale is no longer part of the plan?
Yes, I believe. If that, I apologize, I was not mentioning that. So we did remove the scale from that plan. There will be no scale. There's no construction present. That is all been removed as part of the revised plans that you have for you. Thank you for my.
No problem. And then, Rick, I think this was for you. You were going to go and look back to see if Scott ever approved something for that site? Mr. Grasso said he had permission to do something there.
Oh, no, it was the issue of the 5,000 cubic yards that was brought to the site.
Okay.
That was a temporary stockpiling.
Okay.
In conjunction with the Pepper Street.
Okay.
It was not processing, processing from the site.
That's correct.
If you can elaborate on.
Yeah, so as part of the Pepper Street reconstruction project, our client is the road contractor, as we mentioned before. There was 5,000 yards of material that was brought into Gardner Road, stockpiled there, and I believe has since been removed. There are still some existing stockpiles there that had been on the site before our client took ownership, but the 5,000 yards from the Pepper Street reconstruction project that was imported has since been off the way.
I don't have any other questions this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Ambrosi?
Rick. You didn't receive a letter from the town engineer?
The.
Scott Sosslinger?
No, the, our engineering consultant is with us tonight remotely.
No.
Joe?
I'm talking about, what? I'm talking about when they said they had permission to bring the.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Did you receive a letter from them?
The, I spoke to Scott the next day after the meeting, and for the record, Mr. Scott's line did not authorize the placement of the material there.
There, anything there, no. Because I got a call from the town engineer too, the ex-town engineer, and he told me that your client was never authorized to put anything in there.
Officially.
Found out it was there, officially. He found out it was there, he told me to remove it right away.
Understood. As I understand, I apologize. I believe it has been removed, the material.
And tested.
And yes, and it was tested.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it was tested, because this is material from underneath the asphalt. That's a proper protocol. When you're doing a major reconstruction, you have to test the material too.
I have a question. Why do you need 100,000 yards removed?
It's not so we were going for a number. We were trying to achieve grades on the site, and that's the number that was generated as a result. We weren't looking for that many cubic yardage, per se. We need the site to be at these grades for the future development, and that's the number as a result that we calculated that would be required. We weren't trying to get to any number. I believe it's 100, it's a little, it's a little over 100,000 cubic yards, so.
To get it to grade?
I'm sorry?
To get it to grade?
It's 108,000 cubic yards to get the site down to the grades that we show on our plan, which is essentially for building pads, as we showed on our potential development plan that we have.
And so, it's, you're going to have a crusher on there? You're going to crush the rock there?
That is correct.
Now, like I tried to have you last time, I asked you, how long you think this process is going to take?
So some clarity into that, it's not going to be a continuous, so, how do I explain this? They're going to come in there, they're going to set up all their soil erosion, set up the control items, and then he's, our client is a site contractor, so they're going to go in there, they're going to blast out a section, they're going to crush it, and they're going to haul out, because they're trying to use the material on jobs that he's signed up to get paid.
This could be a long process.
No, I don't assume more, I don't anticipate more than a few years. We are seeking a five-year permit, and I don't anticipate it taking any longer than that. And again, sorry.
The crusher is, so the crusher is going to remain on the site?
Correct, but it's not going to run 24/7/365.
It's not going to run 24/7?
Correct, yes, there's limited hours as in the blasting plan, where that can't run.
What's the noise pollution from the crusher? Where's this crusher going to be?
The crusher is going to be situated significantly set back in this general area, far away from the street front, and.
And what pollution does that produce? Do you have any idea?
I'm not sure, but in the front of the site here, this general area, there's about a, I believe, Mr. Chairman.
The elevations?
Commissioner Lupo, you guys were out there, you saw the 15 to 20-foot berm that exists currently in this portion of the site, and that essentially blocks in the noise that'll be generated.
You're not going to level that berm down too?
No, we're not, because it's in the 50-foot landscape buffer, so we're keeping that.
And so you're going even with the berm over there? I didn't go.
No, no, so the berm is in, the berm is in this general location. Let's say the berm is between elevations 435 and 440.
Do you show the cross-sections?
Yeah. So this is cross-section C here. So this is the front of the site. See this berm right here?
Yep.
So we're maintaining the berm, and then our proposed, the existing grade is in the dashed, so we're maintaining this berm, and then our proposed grade is in the solid line. So the berm stays, and then we're sunken down 15 to 20 feet from the top of that berm. So we're essentially enclosed in the interior of the site, if that makes any sense. And then to the northwest, we have the rock face, so again, we're buffered in on that side. So we're essentially going to be enclosed in on all sides except for the front corner as you come into the site on the left, if the grades do change in elevation across the front of the site. But yes, this is, this is a.
Why are you going so low?
Because where the entrance to the site is, and where we need to come in for the development path in the future, essentially right here, this is at elevation 424, 425. So this berm climbs significantly. So in order for us to generally balance the site, we need to come in at this existing entrance elevation of, like I said, 424 to 425.
So why wouldn't you use the material from there for the site? You've taken off that other site from the berm. Why do you remove material?
We're taking out, we're taking out this general area from the site so that we can level it out, but the quantity of material that we are generating, which is a cut, is nowhere near the amount, is significantly less than the amount needed to fill this, essentially, this little corner. So there's only a little bit of the site that needs to be filled, the rest has to be cut down to grade. Essentially, most of the site is at between elevation 430 to 440, and then in this corner, or in this area to the northwest, it's 460, 470. So the topography changes significantly across the project site.
So you say you're going to give them quarterly reports?
That's correct.
As long as you maintain, as long as you apply.
So the language is of a professional civil engineer, so if it's not our firm, another firm will be required to do so. It's not specific to solely.
Have a wee rant, we ran into this before, where quarterly reports weren't turned in, because the engineering department was no longer hired by the company that was doing the job.
It's a requirement that we place on the plan. We haven't specifically placed only our company. It's any professional civil engineer. I know that the town has recently hired wellings agents, and they're also trying to hire additional town staff. I don't see any event where there was any.
This project, so you don't plan on just doing this project and getting it over with? You plan on doing this project over a period of years? You, I do think that's.
We don't anticipate more than two to three years to do this. We're seeking the five-year permit, because like I mentioned before, we're going to do pieces at a time.
Yeah, but the issue is in this turning to be a quarry.
We have no intentions of doing that. I understand your concerns.
No, it is, because basically, you're not putting a building up. There is no plans to put a building up, there are conceptual plans to put a building up, but that doesn't mean a building's ever going to go up. So basically, you're going to be quarrying the site.
The site in its current topography layout doesn't warrant the construction of buildings. We need to do that, so we.
I have all that, I know that. What I'm saying to you is, you don't, what you're saying to me is that your client is going to do it as need to be, as he needs for the material, to be used material. That doesn't work for me, because we have no control over that. We don't know when it's going to end, we don't have to, we can't see the end of it. It could be five years down the road, or it could run into another five years after that.
The commission would have to grant that five-year extension, so.
No, I understand.
Come back before it. And again, we don't have an intention of it lasting more than five years. Like I said, two to three is our target to get it to speed. And the reason for that, we didn't want to come forward with a full application based off spec. No one, no contract buyer will buy the site in its current condition. So we need to transform the site to get it, you know, generate interest in perspective buyers.
Lot of issues in town about, you know, it's over at Main Street now, that where you gave them permit to level that property. That's almost done, thank God, but it turns into a disaster for these neighbors, and they're going to have to deal with this over and over again. That's why I said to you that I would like to know, point from one point to another, when this is going to be finished. You told me six months? Okay, granted, I mean, then, six months, people may be able to deal with it. But if you're telling me five years, then we have to keep an eye on it. We've already had issues in this town that turned into be a disaster, and I don't want that to happen again, because it could turn into be a disaster. This property already has a history already.
I understand. Our client has recently purchased property, so I can't speak to the past and what's gone on for the site.
And I had issues that your client told me that the engineer gave him permission to put all that stuff on there from the Pepper Street project, and then I get a call saying that never happened, and when they found out it was there, they told them to remove it. So, you know, I just don't have faith in this project going forward the way it should. And so, I mean, you know, I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but I think that the other two commissioners that aren't here, they have questions and concerns about it too. So, I mean, you're going to leave it open anyway, so.
Correct.
All right, I'm good for now.
Commissioner Panici?
I basically have the same concerns. So we're blasting, show me the area from the blasting.
Most of the site would be blasted. There isn't just one specific area, but the majority of the blasting will take place in this general vicinity of the site. These are the bigger elevation cuts.
We're going to be generating in excess of 110 or more yards.
108,000, yes, that is correct, cubic yards.
Where is that material going to go?
Various job sites throughout the tri-state area.
So that's a mining operation to move material, whatever is needed?
It's not a, there, it's a, it's a material processing operation where they're crushing, they're blasting and crushing material to prepare the site for future development. It's not a mining operation, so to speak.
Well, every mining operation, at the end, the site becomes available for something else.
Correct.
Okay. So, once again, the same thing, I got calls for that job on Main Street also, for neighbors, and that it's a crushing operation, and that they're selling material out of there. So over here, they're probably, the owner is going to use a different method of selling the material, but any name that you attribute to it, it's still a mining operation.
I think the biggest difference between the project on Main Street and this project is there's no scale on this project that we're proposing.
It was going to be a scale.
We've since removed.
I got that.
Scales.
I understand that.
From the plans. There's no construction trailer, there's no one setting up shop and selling this material on the open market. Our client is using the material on his own jobs.
But wherever he's using his own jobs, he's not giving this material for free. He's getting paid, so he's really selling under different guise. Whatever it is, it's different names, but the operation of mining remains the same. I mean, we got to look at this, do we want to set a precedent that everyone develops? Do we want to set a precedent that everyone developer that wants to mine and comes in this town and does? So... I'd like to know what kind of a building you want to put there, or what kind of a development you want to put there.
So we showed what those plans would look like. You're talking two industrial buildings here. So there would be essentially a drive coming off Gardner Road, and then you have a 45,000-square-foot industrial flex space. So there'd be multiple loading docks. It'd be like a high bay warehouse or manufacturing facility. Then on the other side, I believe this one is about 32,000 square feet. Same thing with three loading docks, high bay space, typical industrial user would be utilizing this property. And the property, again, is zone industrial. We're not seeking a zone change or anything as part of this application.
In designing this building, have you looked into using a different, higher elevation to place this building?
We have looked at the... Looking at the elevations here. The elevations were chosen strategically. So this portion of the site is the low point, and then as you climb up Gardner, there's a 40-foot elevator, elevation change. So we chose essentially the middle point, if you will, of the site for where our building footprints and paths will be in the future.
What's the trade-in? The contemplated building that you're going to propose, revenue for the town has given you all this liberty to excavate and to mine.
I apologize. I... Do you mind repeating the question?
The question is, we're giving you a mining operation for contemplation that the town is going to benefit for a future build. Am I correct?
That is correct.
How do we know that that building is ever going to happen?
So the site in its current condition, it's not serving any benefit to the Town of Monroe. It's industrial space. It's industrial land. It has to be developed as industrial land unless there's a zone change that is obtained. And if you visit the site, and I know a few of the commissioners have, the topography out there is unforgiving. It goes up and down. There's steep cliffs. There's no way in its current condition that a potential end user can look at that site and think, "This is where I want to put my industrial building." So in order to attract that end user, we need to level the site out. And again, we are keeping the site 12 to 14 feet above the wetlands. We're coming in the middle. We are trying to balance the site as we prepare this pad for future development, which would then generate the tax revenue for the Town of Monroe. In the current condition that the site is in, you cannot develop, but you must level the site.
One last question. I don't like the five years. If you had to generate a plan to place those buildings, it could be done in less than five years, right?
That is correct. If a user walks, if we, six months, we're going at this, and the site looks better, and the potential user is signed up, we will prepare those plans and be in with an application. There's... We're not seeking to extend this process any longer than we have to. This process essentially we chose is because it's a quicker... There's less intensive details from a plan preparation standpoint. It's just to get the site going and get it active so that we can get it to where it has to be, so it can then be marketed and turned into a profitable venture for the town from a tax revenue standpoint.
But then, if the commission grants you this application, it's only to be able to utilize it for the future buildings, not to keep on mining and mining for years and years?
That is correct. And if we need to extend the permit, as I mentioned, we have to come back before the commission. And...
I mean, for the record, Robert Pryor, professional engineer, surveyor with solely engineering. You know, I'm hearing the concerns about the length of time, and I think I get it. You know, I think we all understand the commission's concerns about the site and the length of time. And so, I mean, I think the commission has discretion to issue the permit for any length of time we'd like. You know, you could... You don't necessarily have to make it a five-year permit. You could make it shorter, which, you know, gives the applicant a little... The applicant would have to have a little more accountability, because then, if you issue the permit for a year, we come back after a year, and we say, "Well, we're only half done," or "We're only..." But you could make a decision. You know, you could make a decision that the applicant's proceeding in some reasonable manner, or he's not really doing anything. And then that's, you know, what you could... You certainly could do that.
I think we can do that.
My client would probably kill me for saying that, but that's certainly the...
I certainly can't do that, right?
Oh, no. When we amended the regulations, the commission made me up to five years.
Yeah.
It was two years. It said two years, but you had it issued, up to five. And then any additional timeframe would require public care.
So I guess that's, you know... I mean, certainly, there's... You have that discretion, whether that brings you any more...
Well, the high issue is, when you put in conceptual buildings, it doesn't mean they're ever going to be built. Doesn't mean they're going to be those. Doesn't mean anything. It means that you're going to level the property, then you're going to mine the property, then you're going to sell the material. It doesn't ever mean that that's ever coming there. We started that off on another site with two conceptual buildings that never came in, and the site got destroyed. And we didn't keep track of it. And the engineering didn't turn into quarterly reports, because they were no longer hired by that person. So I know the whole game and the whole deal. So I have concerns about the neighbors. There's people that live on Applegate over there that are going to hear that noise all the time. You're going to hear that crusher going all the time. That's why I asked, what's... Where's the crusher going? The crusher going to be in the hole? How much noise is going to come from the crusher? You don't even know any of that, because you have to figure that out for me.
And we'll provide you that. We'll provide you some...
Right. Bring that back to me when you come next time. And so... And the other thing is, like, I mean, you know, you can blast it, you can remove the rock, it crushes somewhere else. You don't have to crush it there. It doesn't have to be crushed there. And so I don't know if I really want a crusher on that site.
Yeah, I think... I mean, I think there's some... I think there's some... There's some offsets to not crushing it on-site. I think that is...
No, there is.
I think, you know, it takes more trucks. You can't load trucks with big boulders as well as you can load trucks with crushed material, obviously. So then, it's more truck traffic probably coming out of the site to get the material off the site. There's some... I think there's some give and take there, right?
No, and I understand that. That's why I asked about how long this project is going to take. And you gave me the wrong answer. It could be five years, as he needs the material. I'm not into that, as he needs the material. That, to me, is a thing that we can't keep an eye on it for five years. We can't keep an eye on this for five years, find out what's going on there. And the other thing is, originally, that site must have been... The site was mined before. And I know it was mined before. And so is that why you have a lower part there, because that was mined first?
In the corner of the site?
Yeah.
No, that's where the natural grade from the road takes place, and then it climbs substantially. There are spots on the site that are low comparatively, but that specific corner is not one.
But that's because it was mined, those low spots. No, I go by there all the time.
Yeah.
And there was a trailer in there. I don't know if the trailer is still there. Is it? Did you walk the site? Is your trailer still there?
There's a small trailer, I think, in the front where I first pulled in.
And there was somebody living in the trailer there, too. I know that for a fact. So, I mean, this has been an active site. Even when your client took it over, it's been an active site. And then he tells me that he had permission from the town to put stuff on, and then I find out that's not true. So I have very, very, very concerns about this site. So you're going to have to come up with a pretty good plan for me to... For my approval.
Yeah, I agree with Leanne. I think the lack of urgency on the owner's side is what's concerning me, is it's not, "I want to get this done, turn flipped over, and, you know, the building is open, sold as soon as possible." It's the, like Leanne said, "Well, you know, as I need it, I'll take it out and sell it and, you know, come back." That's where my concern is. So I agree, the five years is something that I would not be supportive of as of right now.
Commissioner Penici, you had the floor.
I'm done. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, from this one standpoint, I think we can all agree that some earthwork would have to be... Some earthwork has to be done on the site to level it out and make it developable. And I think we would also agree that where he, you know, as... It's our job, it's everybody's job here, is to promote this development, to make it economically positive thing for the town, which it hasn't been for whatever, last 20 years, where people have been mining it, doing things without permits. So I think, you know, I think there's some... There's something to be said that, you know, we... We're here, the goal is to make it a site that could be developed and a site that would be economically beneficial to the town once it is developed. I understand the concerns about the timing, and I think there's some control, and I think there's some controls that you can add to that to make... To get the applicant a little more accountable for what he's doing out there.
You'd have to come up with some kind of plan.
We're, you know, we're... We're amenable.
You planning to put seismic grafts up there while you're blasting?
Yes.
You planning to put them on the neighbors' houses?
Yes. Yeah, the neighbors will let us put things. Obviously, they have to allow that. But we typically, those get put in the property lines at a minimum, and then if neighbors want them on their properties, we certainly will put them.
Because, you know, like, it's hard rock here.
Yeah.
And some of these blasting, because they're on a fall, travel's pretty good. I know that for a fact. I have big concerns about blasting. We're having big concerns over there. I knew that the people were going to have big concerns over there, but that was already approved before we did anything, and people over there on 25 are having big concerns over there. We're going to have to make sure that this doesn't turn into another one else.
No, understood.
Commissioner, strike me out on...
Yeah, I had a question. Do you guys have any potential clients that are looking to lease these buildings that you're putting out? If possible, any kind of conversations or...
Our client has not shared their information with us at this time, and I don't have... I don't have to answer.
You know, I share the same concerns as everyone, especially with the dump truck traffic. It's already really bad, and I'm not sure why they got a... They're always... Instead of going out to 25 and taking that way, they're always... They're cutting through Jackie Hollow up Elm Street, and it's... They're speeding through there all the time. It's loud, it's horrible. And we're going to put another quarry? I don't know. I wish there had to be a shorter period of time.
He has mentioned, you know, we're here to work with you guys. You would be able to a short time period. And I believe your regulations support you.
Any questions down there? What's the pad elevation there?
So this pad right here is at 422, and this pad is at 420.
Now, I assume that you're... You've chosen those elevations so that the driveway meets with the 8% grade maximum that the town has set?
Correct. It's actually less than that coming in off the street here.
So it'll be less than 8%?
Correct.
Okay. So I see you moved the driveway up.
Yes, that is correct. Just from a circulation standpoint, we wanted to get it centered. I believe it's currently up right over here. So it's right in the general...
So if you moved it down south more, you could get a higher pad elevation, which is what Commissioner Penici was alluding to.
It's something we could, you know, look at, but...
Which case would you...
We did.
... excavation, correct?
So there... The elevation that we chose, like I mentioned, has to do with the septic depth on the site, because this is a site that will be septic. It's stormwater basin elevations. And again, with that road, we might be able to raise it a few feet. That's something we can look at, if that would...
Well, that would require less excavation, correct?
That's correct.
Well, that's something we'd be good to look at if you can come back to us with that, some information there. There would be less trucks coming out. So you said 100,000 yards. So how many truck trips is that? Did we figure that out? Yeah, trucks typically hold, if it's gravel, 7,000? No, 15? Twenty, thirty yards. Sorry? Yeah, 20 yards. The truck is 20, 30 yards.
Yeah, 20 or 30 yards. So how many truck trips would that be?
So 30 into 100,000.
Between...
Fun engineers.
Between 3,000 and 3,500 trucks.
So 3,500.
If you use 30 cubic yards.
1,500 trucks. All right, well...
And Mr. Chairman, staff wants to go over two items before the public portion. When you're ready?
Go ahead.
Let me get rid of the sheer screening. Okay. Mr. Chairman, staff received an email, and I want the applicant's representative tonight just to clarify what he said to me. The complaint was the discharge of a firearm or firearms on the property. The applicant indicated that the property does allow hunting on the property, which requires signature. Most of the commissioners know that. And I think the separation distance to discharge is 500 feet. But I just want you to indicate, Chris, that your client has allowed it, but there's also the firing range in the area, if you can just clarify that.
That is correct. So our client does permit hunting on the property at the moment. I apologize, I don't know the details of such, but I do know that is something that has been mentioned to us. And again, that does require signatures in accordance with the various hunting laws. I apologize, not too familiar with them. And then again, further up Gardner is the Town of Monroe firing range, which is several acres. It's very large, very vast. And in the wintertime, when the leaves are down, you can hear that, those gunshots pretty far away.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear... All these activities have been going on for a long time, so I just wanted to clarify. You had that temporary stockpile that was not authorized. Hunting is permitted. You need the signature. Just wanted to clarify that. The second part is the town's engineer consultant is here, Joe. I didn't know if any of the commissioners had any questions for Joe to look into any aspect for the next meeting. Joe, or... Joe, can you hear me?
I can.
Mr. Chairman, did you have any questions?
I had spoken to Joe earlier about my concerns.
Okay. Did any of the commissioners? Because Joe has familiarized him with the application.
Yeah, I asked Joe to look into the fact... To the possibility of raising the pad elevation and putting in another driveway in a different... I haven't... We haven't gotten back to us yet.
Right, yeah. I'm... Yesterday was my look at the applicant... Again, for the record, I'm sorry, Joseph Canis, I'm the consultant town engineer. Yesterday was my first opportunity to take a look at the plans. And I do have some concerns. I'll be writing a memo about that, but, you know, just one of the things, just looking at the plans, is the placement of the driveway. You know, might... There might be some site distance concerns where it's currently located on the schematic. So if the applicant's engineer can look into that, keep that in the back of their mind, that would be helpful.
So, Mr. Chairman, we'll have that report and distribute to the commissioners.
Okay, good. Did you have anything else, Rick?
No, just those two items, because that complaint was recent, and I was unaware of that. So I want all the issues to be brought before the commission, so you know what's been going on for a long time.
All right, if that's it, I'll say anything. Sorry? How many acres is it? Your acreage?
I believe it's eight and a half, 8.8, somewhere over eight acres. About how long the exact.
All right. Then as this is a public hearing, we'll next go to the public for any comment. Um, if there are any members of the public here tonight in person that would like to comment, please raise your hands. Or any members of the public online that would like to comment, please raise your hands online. Uh, I see there are no public comments. Oh. Okay, just, um, come right up to the microphone, just state your name and address for the record.
My name's Michael Lantzlinian, live down 31 Garter Road.
And just address the commission. Any questions you have will be to us.
I just want to say that, um, you guys covered pretty much any of my concerns or most of my concerns, which I'm sure neighbors' concerns. I don't know that any of our neighbors knew that this meeting was happening tonight, although they knew the wetlands was happening, and some of us shared our views on that meeting, which was about two months ago. Now, um, I mean, I just look at this as being, if, if the intention is to prepare this property for two proposed buildings, it would be something, if I owned a property, to get it done as quick as possible and sell the, sell the property and sell these buildings. I'm not crushing, uh, blasting, crushing stone and at my leisure and selling it as needed. That, that to me speaks, that is a quarry. Sorry, it does. It's a quarry post as a property being prepared for buildings. Okay. Probably all agree that too. The app, that's like agrees with that. So my other question is, will there be rock handling done in addition to rock blasting? Because that is an annoyance more so than rock blasting.
Do you have any other comments or questions? Or just like to get them all out and then?
Well, my other concern, it's probably my most major concern, is that previously, when this was being discussed at a prior meeting, um, I understand that there was a cease and desist order for the property for, for not doing any work on it, yet the client, um, did not comply with that, which makes me think, why would he comply with any other deadlines that he has or other things? Five years can turn into 10 years. Two years can turn into five. Who knows? His goal is to produce, I assume his goal is produce gravel, item four, other products that he can use for himself and sell to other companies regardless if we're told he is or isn't. Um, so I worry about that. The last concern is the traffic down Garter Road. I lived through it when he was going, when, when they were going ahead and doing the work under, in violation, I guess it was in violation. You could say it was all for Pepper Street, but it wasn't for Pepper Street, because I saw those trucks go from Garter Road down to his facility on Pepper Street to build a big mountain of gravel, and then they would go back and forth. And that road's a scenic road. It's a narrow road. We got a lot of precast trucks going down and other types of trucks going down. And there's dump trucks just going up and down that road, and that's a concern to me, especially the fact that, you know, front loaders are driving down the street without police escorts, and so are, so are backhoes and other heavy machinery that I don't believe should be traveling down a road just because their, their, their facility is a mile away on Pepper Street. Another concern. It's mainly the traffic. I mean, 108,000 yards of gravel or rock to be blasted out here. Um, I'm not sure you're gonna get a 30-yard truck. That's a little much, but it's about 5,000 trucks. A lot of trucks going up and down Garter Road. I don't know if Timothy Hill Hill ever happens, that, that breakthrough, maybe that's the way they go, but, um, I couldn't imagine being those two houses that live across the street, but I'll let them talk for themselves if they decide to. But I'm, I'm far, I'm outside the circle, but I still, the concern is more the traffic, the trucks.
Thank you. The hearing will be continued if there's anyone else that wants to comment.
That's it for me.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, so any other members of the public here in person or online that would like to comment? If not, we'll go back to the applicant if they interested in responding to the questions, or if not, what you'd like to do tonight. Go ahead.
We'd like to continue the hearing for the next meeting.
Do you have any response to the neighbor?
We've written down the concerns and the questions. We'll address them.
Thank you. Then we will continue this hearing until, is two weeks enough, Chris?
Yes, we'll let you know.
19th, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, January 19th. Thank you. Moving on, we have our second public hearing for the night. That is SEP 2022-08, file number 1648A, 467 and 485 Pepper Street. Um, this is a continuation also from 12/122. Rick, you have new exhibits for this application.
Mr. Chairman. We have response to engineering, uh, comments from solely engineering dated December 8th, 2022, and letter of extension from solely engineering dated 12/12, 2022. That is almost.
Okay, thank you. And for the applicant, we have again, once again.
Good evening, commissioners. On behalf of the applicant, my name is Chris Polaski. I'm a civil engineer with solely engineering. Office is located here in Monroe at 501 Main Street. Here to talk about 467 and 45 Pepper Street. We are seeking a special exception permit. Uh, inland wetlands has closed the hearing and are currently in deliberations. So if you realize yourself at the site, uh, if you run along Route 25 to the north towards Newtown, uh, would you mind sharing my screen? Thank you. Uh, so if you run along Route 25 to the north towards Newtown, come down Pepper Street. You have 467, 45 Pepper Street. They, uh, own each other. Are both owned by our client. Uh, so I did, uh, we did see the plans, uh, December, in beginning of December of last year. Um, I do want to ask, did you all receive the plans and the material that was submitted along with them? I believe so.
I have.
Yeah.
Awesome. So we have not revised the plan since then, so you all have the most up-to-date copy before. Um, there were several, uh, comments from commissioners last time. We also did receive comments from, um, Mr. Canis, from Land Bond, and we did respond to those comments. We did institute a series of changes to the site, um, mostly regarding from the previous, um, application. Uh, most of the comments regarding the stormwater analysis of the site. So we did tweak some of the, uh, retention areas, some of the pipe networks. Um, we did make some changes to our basins, not in terms of, uh, locations. Again, they're all located in the same places, uh, but we did tweak some of the grades, add some additional fencing and guardrail. Uh, but there's a series of, uh, other changes that we did respond, and we have those responses for you. Uh, some of the major concerns last time that I do want to run through, um, were some requests for items to be added to the plans. So, uh, the information shown on the screen is taken directly from our plan sheet 2.11. Um, I'm never heard of that.
Can you just enlarge that a little? So you can see it as you go through it.
Thank you.
So some of the items that we want to talk about that we add to the plan are, first, the potential equipment slash storage items. Uh, these are the items that would be placed within the limits of the outdoor storage. So those include catch basin structures, tops, rims and parts, manhole structures, um, covers and parts, Belgium, concrete, manhole and wall block, stone and various storm and sanitary pipe sizes and lengths. So again, those are just some of the items that would be within the outdoor storage areas identified on the plans. Uh, to the right of the screen here, and I apologize for trailing off a little bit, but, um, there was a request for equipment information on the site. So we listed the, uh, machinery that would be used. That includes excavators, wheel loaders, jaw crushers, which again, those would be inside of the 9,000 square foot building, um, screeners, fixed air loaders, smaller excavators, dumps, various sized dump trucks, uh, sorting and stacking conveyors, again, inside of the facility, uh, and a street sweeper. So those are the equipment items that will be used on the site as they proceed throughout the operation. I scrolled down a little bit here. There was a request to specify the aggregate or finished product material that will be, uh, on the site. So that includes screened topsoil, uh, quarter inch stone, three quarter inch stone, one and a quarter inch stone, processed aggregate, processed subways, processed aggregate, bedding sand, screened common fill, reclaimed asphalt. Again, those are the finished products that are going to be manufactured inside of that facility. In terms of the accepted material list, so this is items that will be coming into the facility. Uh, essentially, these are, is basically clean fill. So we've dedicated the D E P definition of clean fill, and in is basically the materials that are shown on this list. So we have clean fill, which includes asphalt paving fragments, which are virtually inert, brick, concrete, natural soil with no detectable contaminants, rock, stone, sand and gravel. Again, this is all , they've kind of got the D E P's definition of clean fill. And then we did also provide a rejected materials list. And again, all of these lists that I'm going through right now are shown on plan sheet 2.1. So the rejected material list included contaminated soils, glass, construction and demolition debris, odorous material, stained slash painted concrete, concrete residual mastic, electric wires, fabrics, roofing and siding, vinyl pile, floor coverings, wood, brush, stumps, materials from batteries, insulation, other construction materials including trash, rubber slash tires, plaster, uh, lab and sheet rock, surfacing material, schmucko and scrap. I did want to run through those items with you, as I know that was a request, um, at the last hearing. Uh, other than that, um, again, we did make some changes, um, in terms of the stormwater on the site, but nothing overall, uh, really changed from a plan standpoint. There were no major, we didn't move the building or any of the bins or any of, anything of that nature. More raining and stormwater. Uh, we did add fence, some fence and asphalt, uh, along this area here. Uh, there were no major, uh, site plant items that were moved as a result of, uh, from more engineer moving stormwater related. Let me see. I believe that's it. And with that, I'd like it to open up to the application.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll start with the commissioners again. On my left, the commissioner.
No questions or comments right now.
And then, uh, commissioner, Rosie? Where's your equipment list on here?
Uh, it's G 2.11.
On this plan, it's in?
Yep, it's there. So I apologize. One second.
Do you have an updated plan? This is what I just got.
Right here, equipment information. It's up on the top. I apologize. We're out of space.
It's small font.
On the screen it's small, yes, but on the plan, it's, it is legible.
The actual trials is back here, here somewhere.
The equipment list is right here.
All right. So why do you need two large excavators? For what?
To load the material for the screeners and the various, uh, plants inside of it.
Two large excavators for that?
That's correct.
For what?
To load the material into.
You only need one to load the material into the thing. You don't need two.
Um, I know we.
You got two large excavators, you got two small excavators. How many excavators are you gonna need to load material? You're not digging on that site.
Correct, but we do have to place it into the screener, which needs to be an excavator to do that.
I don't think I'm gonna be, with these three large, these four, four excavators, I don't think that we need four excavators to load.
If, uh, if you'd like to limit the number of excavators, it's something.
I can understand your loader, okay? Because usually you take the material, you load it into it with a loader. You don't use an excavator to load material into?
Into the various, uh, again, so in the screener and then in this, the hoppers that go inside of the building, you need to load them with.
So you need four excavators to do all that?
We need multiple excavators, maybe three, maybe four is excessive, but we do need multiple excavators.
Five. 24-ton triaxle dump trucks on that property to move, to move material around?
There will be various trucks that our client owns that would.
No, this is gonna turn into be a storage yard. So you got too much material. You got too many, too much equipment here.
Uh, this is a manufacturing facility, and our, our client would, I would like to, I would like to list all the material that could potentially, uh, didn't want to leave anything out, so that there's no, uh, question. If, if at one time there's five dump trucks, we only put four.
And then on the property, you're gonna put three screeners on that property?
That's correct.
So you're gonna run screen, you're gonna run three screeners on that property?
Are they all gonna be where it's marked?
There's gonna be one. Again, it is all shown here. So the screener here, and then there'll be one, maybe two inside of the building.
So the crushers and, sorry to interrupt, screener and the crushers will be in the building?
That's correct.
One.
Well, one, there will be a screener outside.
One crusher in the building.
Correct.
And then he says he's gonna have a screener in the building.
Why would the other screener outside?
Well, because you're gonna screen different materials outside, and then you're gonna have all the noise pollution.
Can you move all the screeners inside?
We cannot.
Too big?
It's too big, and based off of, uh, the material, the piles that you need to operate, this is essentially the area that we need, and we've, we've shown kind of how that operation has worked. And, um, I can explain it if you'd like.
Explain the operation how?
Um, how this, how the site works.
Well, you have on your three screeners, right? You only show one screener on the plan.
That's because the other screener will be located inside the building.
You can run a screener in the building.
And, and so a 9,000 square foot building, you're gonna put two screeners in there and a crusher?
So maybe we only need two screeners.
You have three on the plan.
That's correct. Again, I, I know that we need at least one screener outside and potentially one.
So why do you need five triaxle dump trucks?
So our client.
So why do you need those?
Well, our client is a site contractor, so.
I, I understand that. I understand.
So they're using two to three dump trucks. It might be just be two parked there additionally.
Yeah, but that's not what the purpose of this was for.
It's a manufacturing facility, so it's a, as part of that, they need.
We had an equipment list the last time, what we did for the, the application never got dumped.
On the previous equipment list, there was multiple loaders and excavators as well.
Not that many.
I don't have it before me, but I know that.
I was here.
I have it. There were three loaders, one excavator for surge pile operations, one excavator for sort piles, and a sweeper, and three trailers and two.
That's it. You increased it like astronomically insane. You want now five triaxles, we're only allowed two.
We also doubled the size of the property, and the building has also doubled in size.
So you're putting four sorting, stacking conveyors on that property too?
That is correct. There'll be multiple stacking conveyors coming in from the inside of the building and going out of the building.
Okay. All right, now, let's go on to the next. So your acceptable material, you're gonna bring asphalt, fag, uh, basis, right?
Fragments, that is correct.
And then you're gonna bring in concrete. What kind of concrete you're bringing?
Sidewalks.
Just sidewalks?
Uh, various, again, our client's a sidewalk contractor, so.
It's a number of things. Concrete has rebar in it. Even sidewalks on concrete has rebar in it. So my issue is, it's not clean fill. It has rebar in it. So I don't know what your concrete thing here is here, but it's obvious that that could mean anything. You just put down concrete. It doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean anything.
We took the definition again from clean fill, uh, from the, kind of the D E P standards. That's.
Yeah, but the thing is, is like I said to you, concrete with rebar is not considered clean fill. I know that from the state, because I talked to the state about that. I know that from the state, because I talked to the state about that. I don't want that as an acceptable material, because I don't know what it's going to be unless you have a manifest of where it came from.
We've.
The other thing with the asphalt, so now this is, what this is turning into is to be a recycling facility, which we don't allow in this town.
It's not a recycling facility. If you, if you think about it like this, so Patagonia produces jackets. As part of jackets, they take in milk cartons and milk jugs and various recyclables and they turn it into a product, the jacket. That is essentially what this is, a manufacturing facility. It's not a recycling facility. They're taking in items and turning them into products.
So you're recycling concrete to turn it into something else?
Turning it into something, it's not a manufacturing facility.
It's not a manufacturing facility, you can call it a block, it's not. It's a recycling facility.
Recycling is when you bring it in, you sort it and then you distribute them. We're taking a product and we're taking items and turning them into a product, that's the difference.
You're taking, you're taking concrete, you're taking in, you're saying you're not taking in demolition debris, but that doesn't mean anything, any concrete could be anything. I mean, the demolition debris has certain things mixed into it. What I'm saying is, this could turn into be a recycling operation. When you're taking in the asphalt, the same thing, you're going to crush the asphalt, you're going to make it into small particles, and you're going to sell that material. That's basically what you're doing. You're taking it off a road, which we don't know what road it came off, if it has PCPs in it or if it doesn't have PCPs in it. We have no idea, how old the road is or whatever, we had an issue with that. We talked about that a long time ago. And so I have problems with asphalt coming into this property. I have problems with concrete coming into this property.
In order to make the reclaimed asphalt and the other products, we need to import those materials, they're part of the manufacturing process.
Listen, I understand what you're saying. I have concerns about this, and I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but I have concerns, because it's going to turn into be a disaster. Don't forget, you're right next to the Quonic River. So you just, just remember that. And so you're not like very far from the Quonic River, you're right next to the Quonic River. And I asked you a question last time, when I asked you to bring me in. G I S of the property, what it looks like now, did you bring that in?
I don't have a current picture before me.
I'd like to see that picture, because I want to see what this property looks like today.
Satellite view?
Satellite view.
I apologize that the satellites, they update when they.
You never know what you're going to get.
Yeah.
This property has been heavily excavated already. And I know that for a fact, because I got a complaint. Somebody was walking the trails over there about that. And I like to see basically what it looks like as of today. I have an issue with that too. But the thing is, is on this material list that you're bringing on, I don't know what the rest of the commission feels, this could turn into be a disaster. When we first approved this a long time ago, everything was going to be in the building. There was not going to be any screener outside. All this, every process was going to be in the building. And that's what we left it at, and that's why we agreed to it in the first application, that never happened. And now you're back in front of me and you want three screeners that we never proposed that in the first place, and you want to turn this in to what I consider to be a recycling facility. You're bringing in asphalt, you're bringing in concrete, you're bringing in brick, which I don't know what you're doing with brick, if it's not clean brick, it's not clean fill. If it has paint on it or whatever, it's not even clean. And that's the state of Connecticut. If the brick is painted, it's not considered clean fill. And I know that for a fact. So you have all this stuff here and this material list that you want to bring in here, that you need to cut this down and figure out what you're going to bring in here. Because I'm not going to approve a plan just with concrete, brick, and asphalt that, like I said to you, the brick is painted, it's not clean fill.
I understand there.
I know all that, because I went through this all already. And I went through it before with the state, so I know all about this already. And I know how this can turn into be a disaster. So as the way I'm looking at it, this is not just a regular, that he's going to make bends and sell out material and everything like some people do. They just, you know, they have crushed stone, they have this kind, and you have quarter, you have this and this and that. This is turning into be a recycle facility. And so my issue is, unless you come up with a better plan here. I think the other commissioners that appear too, I think maybe you left open, because I believe Norman Panini and Rob had some concerns too. And they're not here tonight, so. I'm good for now.
Commissioner Panini.
You.
Panini or? Panichi, yeah. These are the D.
I thought I'd say it after two years.
You've been called a lot, but not that. Anyway. The equipment could be curtailed a little bit. I understand you're just a consultant, not the owner, so you don't have the actual knowledge of what he's going to use some of this material for.
I'm familiar with how this operation works, if you can ask your question, yeah.
So concrete with rebars, like we mentioned before, there's other places where they accept concrete, but not with rebars. I mean, there's limitations, because that's one item. Yet asphalt, what does your, what do you intend to do with asphalt?
So yeah, I can, so we're making a product, our client are making a product called reclaimed asphalt. So essentially, our client's a road contractor. So you bring in asphalt fragments, again, chunks if you will, and then they're processed through the crusher and they're broken up into tiny particles, and then they're mixed with gravel and other various materials and they're turned into essentially reclaimed asphalt, it's like a road base. So it's a product that's approved by the state of Connecticut. It goes underneath the roads throughout, when you're driving around town, you're driving across the state, it's called reclaimed asphalt. And again, they take in old asphalt chunks, crush them up, mix them with other ARV materials such as gravel and stone, and then they get this product, it's essentially called road base. And it's a state of Connecticut product, they use it all over.
I'm aware of that, okay. So how do you tend to treat asphalt that comes in that has contaminants? That's what I'm worried about, okay? Not only does it have petroleum contaminants, but it has other contaminants. How do you screen those?
Can look into that information for you, I don't have an answer at this time.
I like to know that, because that's where concern is, because of the river nearby.
Understand.
Other than that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Panichi. Commissioner Smokliana.
Yeah, I have concerns about demolition material being recycled, because you never know what is in it. You know, these buildings could be, you know, built in the sixties or seventies. How we're going to crush it up? So yeah, I'd like a shorter list of what can be brought in and if it's tested. And also, I was wondering, can that building be made bigger so you could fit more equipment inside to limit the noise?
So on the construction demolition debris question, that's actually on our rejected material list. We're not accepting, we just know it's C and E debris. That's right listed here as rejected on the list. And then in terms of the building, site plan, we need the room around the building for the loaders to take the finished product and place it into the bins. So we can maybe expand it a little bit, but not enough to fit everything inside of the building. Or again, the only item that's going to be outside of the building is this screener here. So, but I don't believe it's conducive to the operation to expand the building and then we'd be essentially pinching ourselves in, the loaders wouldn't be able to navigate around the site.
What is the construction material of that building? Is it just basic steel frame with aluminum, or is it?
Yeah, it's, it was, we've been before A R V, it's very high to accommodate the equipment that's being.
Is there any soundproofing or anything like that?
I'm not sure, I had asked the architect that designed it, but we do have acoustic fence around the site here and in the front. So it starts around this area. As you can see, maybe you can make out the small circles here. Continues from here all the way down and around here. And then in front of the site, we also have acoustic fence as well, sorry. So that will help mitigate the sound.
Yeah, I mean, when you say you're not going to take any demolition debris, but I mean, any kind of concrete is demolition, because once you pour it, it's there and you break it up, I mean.
So the definition of construction demolition debris in state of Connecticut is from your building. So that's your wood framing, your steel beams. That's your demolition debris per se, we are not accepting any of that. That's if you take a wrecking ball to a building and then with a gravel, you scoop that up and load it in a dumpster and then haul that off, we are not taking that material. The material that's going to come in here is, if they're doing a sidewalk job and they replace a sidewalk, they will rip up the old sidewalk, load it into a truck, that'll come here. And then there's going to be, you know, dirt with that, and that's why we need to screen it, goes through the crusher, and we manufacture that into a different product that we can use somewhere else. So there's, there's no like windows or any of, any of that. So that's the key difference I believe that I want to get on the record is tested. All right, we're not knocking down buildings, taking in building demolition debris. It's not, that, that's, there's nothing here that we would be able to use any of that for, so. That's not our intent, at least.
Are you good? Did you want to ask some questions? Yeah. What's your protocol for intake of this material?
When the material is brought into the site, it has to get, the trucks go over the truck scale here and it's checked by personnel on site.
Who's testing it?
I'm not sure.
You don't have any testing?
We're not bringing in material that's going to be placed here on the site. And there's nothing that we're going to be bringing in.
No, no, you're going to process material on that site. And what, where is the material coming from?
Various sites, probably.
And so that manifest, that where it's going to come from, and that it's tested clean, and it's, what, what kind of a plan do you have here?
I don't have that information at this time, but I can.
Well, you need to bring that back at the next meeting, because you can't just, we can't just give you the hard blanch of what you want to bring in here, that's not going to happen.
Understand, and that's why we provided the list, but we will bring more.
You've got to come up with some kind of testing plan here, what you're going to bring in to this site, where it's coming from, and when, and have manifest of where it's coming from. You can't just bring in material into the site. It's just not going to happen that way. It's like, you know, it's, it's like, you just can't, you just can't do that. That's not going to happen, because we need to know where it's coming from. We've already had incidents here where stuff came out of this from other places in this town, okay? That's not going to happen here. You've got to come up with some kind of a plan, I believe the rest of these commissioners would feel, what's more secure with what you're going to bring in? How are you going to bring in some documentation? How it's being tested, where it was tested before you bring it to the site? Because I'm telling you, you're right next to the Quonic River.
I understand your concerns and we will look into that.
So you plan on keeping this open, right?
It really manifests company.
I believe most of the material will have manifest with it, so that I just double check, but that is, that will be something we look into.
And I have, I have just, that last building was four thousand square feet, the one that was approved. This one's nine thousand.
That's correct.
And the main reason that we signed off on the last plan was because all the crushing and screening was going to be done within the building, the four thousand square foot building. So I would feel much better, it sounds like most of us would, if the one outdoor screener was brought inside and all the screening and crushing was done inside as it was proposed in the first application that was approved. The first application also required coverings and doors for all of the bays, which, you know, I mean, that would be a little bit onerous, I think. I don't think we're going to go there. I know it was a smaller operation, it was only the left half. But that's what sold four out of five of the commissioners was that, because it's right on Pepper Street, the main toll fair, and it's right on the rails to trails. And, you know, as Commissioner Ambrosi mentioned, it's in the Quonic watershed. We do have concerns with a permanent crushing facility that will be there when my great grandchildren are here.
Understand your concerns. In terms of the items inside of the building, the crushing is the loud noise generator. The screening really does not generate nearly as much noise as a crusher. Just inherently in the operation, a screener is just sorting material where crusher is physically crushing and breaking material. That's the loud noise generator. And again, that's all taking place inside of the building. From a site operation standpoint, it is very critical to our client that we are able to operate this one screener outside. And it is not a large screener, but we need to be able to take in material and have that initial sorter outside of the building.
So it's screened more than once, the same material, is that how it works?
So there's different conveyor belts, so when it's, there's, based off the size, one, like top, you know, topsoil might come off this conveyor belt, and then the other conveyor belt might be like bigger stones or things like that. So it just, it's not, this material isn't screened twice per se, it's sorted as it runs through the screener. So you scoop, scoop the material, place it in a hopper, and then it goes through, and then based off its weight and size, there's various belts and screens. And then if the material is bigger, it stays on top of the screen and goes off into one pile.
Sort of.
Yeah, so, yeah, and then, exactly, and then if the material passes through the screen, there's a conveyor going this way that takes that material to this pile.
And that will happen out there.
That is right here.
On the screen.
That's correct. I do appreciate your concerns and we, we are, you know, sensitive to the fact that there is a wallet on site. We believe we've taken measures and precautions to protect those natural resources. And we aren't here to do things right, we're seeking permits, we've listed the materials that we are seeking them for. We're not trying to have any surprises or anything. That's why, if I apologize, there's an extra couple of machines on there. We just wanted to get everything out there. We don't want any surprises or secrets of what's going on on the site.
There was also a requirement to have the sweeper used daily.
That's correct, I believe that's also in our notes on one of the plans, and that is in our equipment list. And we also have an operations and maintenance plan. It's listed on the G two point two one, which details how they're going to be cleaning the various stormwater structures. Right here, we have the operation and maintenance plan on G two point two one, it details. Yeah, no worries.
You also have a sprinkler on site, right?
So all of the bins and inside of the building. Also, all the bins have sprinklers, dust control, and inside of the building, there would be like misters almost to keep the dust down. So yes, there's twenty-five, twenty-eight sprinklers on site, if you will.
I have one more question. Now, of all the material that you're processing, that you're going to be able to use to manufacture other products, is there any material that you're not going to be able to process? And if there is, what are you contemplating to do it?
We don't anticipate taking any material that we wouldn't be able to process. If there is anything that comes out of the site that we, we don't think we would be able to, our applicant doesn't think they'd be able to handle, it wouldn't be accepted out of the site.
But as part of the process, you might make this side and this side and this side. It's something that you might not be able to do, if you do, what are you doing?
It would be placed in a bin, but all the products that we are making or manufacturing will be sold to the only market.
Also, there was another requirement, that there be no storage containers on the property?
I don't know if we have that listed as an item.
Can we add that?
We could, we could look at adding that, yes.
So you're going to look at this equipment list and cut it down?
Yes. Again, I apologize, there's a couple extra machines, just didn't want any surprises.
And I want to know about the asphalt, the brick, and the concrete, I want to know what you're going to do about that.
We will do that, thank you.
And I still have concerns about the screener, because like Mike said. And I still have concerns about the screener because like Mike said, like you said, we, we agreed.
Originally, yes.
Originally because it was going to be indoors and it was going to be no noise.
And that was a.
Because we have buildings and we have other things, we have, right. And we, and we, we approved it only because everything was going to be indoor. And I think we put the covering on the bins because we didn't want anything leaking out of the bins. Per se, that's what for, for rain or a heavy storm, whatever.
Yes, so I believe the, the coverings and the outdoor storage was because the regulations at the time, they didn't allow as much outdoor storage as shown, so we actually had to make them structures. So that's why we added the coverings.
I think we added the coverings. I don't think they were there at first. I think we added.
Totally, the way, that's what got through.
Right, that's what.
That's how they were.
And so you've been to a mafia block, is that, or?
That is, that is correct, yeah.
And it, and it's on here that you're going to pin them?
The ones where, so these ones, the wetlands commission in this area, like. So these two bins, which are our material intake bin and the screened material pile here, they're surrounded by special, uh, mafia blocks, if you will, or concrete blocks that'll be pinned and it has a stone revetment on the back and there's, um, there's like a warning pipe on top. So Wetlands was concerned that this material may be pushed over the wall. So our solution was when the loader operator is here pushing into this pile, number one, he has the concrete blocks that are pinned, there's a stone revetment behind, and then he sees the warning pipe on the top, when he no longer sees the pipe, it's been, it's been pushed over, so that would, that would be a clue to stop pushing. So the pipes essentially would be on the back side of the wall here and they stick out. There's a detail I actually have on that.
So those are going to be pinned, you said, right?
Those, that is correct, because those are where the loaders will be physically like pushing in consistently up against. So this is a detail on it. So you have, you can imagine over here for the loader and the, uh, material pile is, here are the pinned concrete blocks and you have the, the pipe and the stone revetment. So as he's pushing this way, you have multiple items that protect any material from going over the wall towards.
The pipe is just to tell you that.
It's a warning, yes. It's not, it doesn't actually, doesn't actually prevent, yeah.
Doesn't prevent?
It's just a warning, it's an additional safety measure, yes.
And what about the other bins?
The other bins are standard, uh, concrete block, they're not going to be pinned.
They're not going to be pinned?
No, they won't be pinned.
So what's preventing them from moving?
Um, some of them are, so like this whole entire row is built up against existing grade. So if the existing, the existing grade, there's, you have a flat pad, then you have your blocks and the grade on this side is actually right up against it, it's higher. So you're pushing against.
Yeah, I'm talking about the six, six of I or four.
Um, beats three, they're not receiving as much loader traffic, nearly as much as these two bins, but if you want us to pin them, happy to.
You're going to pin those because that, that goes downhill.
We can pin those, oh, no worries.
Okay, and then I saw, I guess it was in the left, saying you're trying to make a road to get down to, you, you eliminated that road, you got rid of it?
The maintenance road?
Maintenance road, I don't see it here. It's on this plane. Wasn't supposed to go back there, but I think.
Where, I'm sorry.
Was to get down to the.
Get down to the bottom.
Tension basin there.
This one right here or the other one?
Other one.
I was talking about was on the left.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, this one, there's an existing access road here that we're just maintaining.
But they had concerns about that, right?
Yeah, so the, all addressed up, so they want, they didn't want this to expand further. So there's jersey barriers that we are placing along both sides of, well, on the, on this side of the current access driver road, we're extending jersey barriers all the way up. And on the other side, you have the retaining wall, then we're placing fence and jersey barriers all the way around this outdoor storage area. So there's no way, and then there's also, uh, those are additional measures so that they're basically trapped, if you will, there's, they, they can't expand the area further because there's.
So what's that area for to help?
That's for the pipes and catch basin metal structure. They don't, this is a less frequent storage area, so, uh, if you listen to the wealth hearing, I, I won't into that, I can explain it here, but these, this is, this is the active work areas where mostly everything will be taking place, but they do have a lot of pieces of stormwater pipe, they have some catch basins. So every once in a while, like when they need them, they will just come down here and scoop those up. But they're, they're not going here, back here, uh, very frequently.
We know equipment stored down there, right? That's good for them.
Okay, any of the other commissioners have any questions before we go back to the public? Okay, if there are any members of the public here tonight that have questions about this application or any members of the public online that have any, uh, questions or comments, please raise your hands. Can we see them raise their hand, Rick? Any members of the public online that have comments or questions, please raise your hand now. Okay, seeing none, then, um, staff, do you have anything, Rick?
I know, I'll continue to work with the engineering consultant, Joe.
All right. Any other last minute questions from the commissioners? Then, uh, back to you.
Thank you for the comments. We'd like to continue the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. Fairing is going to be continued until January 20th, 19th. And very good presentation on too difficult. Okay, declarations and determinations, uh, we have none. New applications, I just saw one on the table here. With those, we'll get back. Meeting minutes, uh, I don't see any meeting minutes. We'll have the table.
Staff didn't give the 11:30, okay, this table, those, Mr. Chairman.
Planning and zoning matters, uh, and then, um.
Cheryl, Cheryl will be attending the second meeting, uh, which will be the 19th to give her report.
Any correspondence?
Mr. Chairman?
I have no reports. Any commissioners have any reports?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, I think I saw online that the cell phone tower was turned on behind Jackie Hall. Do you have any update on that?
I believe that is, uh, the case because I had a meeting with the first selectman on Wednesday, he was energized. The temporary, what was the name of the temporary?
I don't know, but it's gone.
It's gone.
So what, so the, um, first responders are on. Are there any cell phone carriers up there yet?
Not at this time.
Okay.
To be determined.
So. Because Jackie Hall is still reporting, now they have like no internet. So I don't know, the building, the, whatever they call it outside, was providing temporary internet for the schools, but now I'm hearing they have like no internet service.
Okay, let's see.
Which is, yeah.
I'll, I'll let, I'll let.
It's a safety concern in case they ever had to get a hold of someone.
Okay, and then, um.
I just have two items, Mr. Chairman. You're up. Okay, Mr. Chairman, the zoning regulations, uh, meeting of, uh, January 23rd needs to be rescheduled to the 30th. Uh, I just want to ask commissioners if there's any conflicts Monday, January 30th, 5:30. Okay, I'll, I'll be putting together, uh, an outline because we have a lot on for discussion. Second item, Mr. Chairman, the Connecticut Land Use Law Conference for Planning and Zoning Commissioners, held on March 11th. And I think this is going to be at Wesleyan University. This will satisfy the classes needed for the commissioners required by the state of Connecticut.
So this is, this is a webinar?
Yeah, conference, all day conference Saturday.
Oh, virtual, okay, so you don't have to actually go to Wesleyan.
It's all virtual?
This is a virtual meeting.
Oh, that's right, it doesn't say Wesleyan. This is a virtual meeting, Zoom meeting.
You have to call them to give them, give them your.
Well, I got to take care of all the commissioners, so.
Oh, they know.
As, as reported to you, all eight commissioners, regular and alternates, are required to take classes.
So you're going to fill this out?
Yes.
And then you're going to let us know?
Yeah, so please mark your calendars, March 11.
March 11?
Yeah, 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM. They used to hold this at Wesleyan University, that's why I said it, but it is Zoom. You're right, Nicole, you know? So you could do it at the comfort of your home or wherever you are.
Is it by January 2024 that this has to be done or?
No, this year, 2023, all planning and zoning commissioners, elected or appointed, shall fulfill the classes. These are all the classes you see them all, law.
All done in one day?
Is it Zoom only or is there, there's no in-person option?
No, it's Zoom only.
And so, and what did it give you, a certificate for this or something or?
Uh, no, but what, how do you know if you did this or not?
You got to.
It's, uh, huh?
Yeah.
I don't know if you're watching or not.
You don't know?
Uh, well.
Yeah, they usually say attendance.
Myself, huh? All right, so that's fine. That covers that, this is.
This will, this will cover everything that the commissioners need.
Now, is this yearly you have to do this or this is yearly?
Yeah. Let me double check on that.
I'm not changing that.
Wetlands is a lot easier because it's online. You know, like deep.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure land, it's annually.
Okay.
You know why? Because you have the law component.
Yeah.
And ethics, and it affects the, yeah. Conflicts of interest, yes. You, you covered everything.
Is there like a test at the end and all that?
No, you just attend it and then I'll let the Office of Policy and Management confirm the list of the commissioners that attended.
There's items here that don't date to us.
No, no, just.
Yeah, it's a whole day, you just have to listen to the whole thing, the whole day.
Well, you raise a good point, Don, it covers everything. Affordable housing, fair housing.
And usually they have a way of taking attendance, so they'll, they'll know.
They'll know.
Sign with your name to lock.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
And this is for zoning board of appeals too. Inland Wetlands, like I said, is a lot easier. And listen to this, inland Wetlands only mandates the chairman and or designated staff, like the Wetlands officer. For P and Z and ZBA, it's all of you. So staff will put that together, mark your calendar and, uh, you can do it at the comfort of your home or wherever you are.
Are they going to send the course materials to our houses, Rick? Do you know? Or, because it says you have to sign up by the 15th of February to have all the printed material sent to you.
Yeah, so I got to get this, yeah.
All that stuff then?
I'm going to get it all in, yeah. I started doing it tonight.
All right.
And they required, uh, the, uh, payment. So then they, so had to stop.
Exactly.
And.
Yeah, so they must say.
There's one nice portion on here called enforcement. So that's going to be interesting.
Last 45 minutes?
All right, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other commissioners have any reports? Not chair, I want to turn the motion to a adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Question? The second, all those favorites say aye.
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 Watching passes, we are hereby adjourned at 9:47.